All right, I'll call this meeting, the zoning board of the appeal store. Uh, first item that we're looking at of the minutes, September 8th. Um. The draft, new draft version can be distributed to everyone that should include some red lines of the candy. Um, so I will ask to see if anyone's got, um, edits starting on the picture. Think now pages two or three?
Yeah, on the vote to wait the hearing, seems like there's a vote missing.
No, there wasn't a form there.
Oh, I may just check the wrong number.
Okay. Yeah, I think Andy Crosby didn't participate. Yeah, so I think it should be four goes to five. Crosby's removed and then Maria and Lenny. Any comments right at page four or five? But we accept the mounds of second as a matter.
Second.
Motion, seconds, any discussion? There are none, all in favor?
Okay. Should I vote on the minutes or not?
Um, no, no, all members probably go straight ahead. All right, um, we only have two pieces corresponded, both with concerns sixty-four Pine Point Road, so we can hold votes until the hearing at seven fifteen. Um. Any, uh, updates of zoning or planning nature? Um, otherwise I'll just note, uh, Stokes, uh, who will be on the twenty-third of the month. There was a special town meeting, um, on the twenty-seventh of the month, month, excuse me. Um, uh, that note, there are only one item or two.
Two articles.
Two articles, two, yes. Um, so just to note that there are two articles related to the NDTA community zoning matter. So, um, uh, if you can go to that, that would be very appreciated. Um. I guess just to jump ahead, uh, for November third, which is going to be the next ZB meeting, anything right now on the agenda?
Yes, there's a special permit that I got that I scheduled for seven fifteen.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure. Anything, is it unique nature?
Um, it's a pre-existing non-informing single-family house that was converted into a two-family house and they're relocating the stairs on the outside into these side yards. Okay, so. Being we see now.
All right, um, otherwise we'll just sit tight for a few minutes until the sixty-four Pine Point Road public hearing. So are you folks here for that?
Yeah.
Yes, all right, well, sit tight until seven fifteen.
Yes.
So, um, if we work this round, all right, where is that? You're actually letting me let you sit up.
Yeah.
And then turn my back to try to figure out how to fix my something.
Do it yourself.
There, there are certain things at my house that I feel comfortable doing. Um, you know, clean my own gutters. You know, I can do some carpentry maybe, um, electrical, definitely not. And anything involving, you know, what, what, once you get the pipes under the house going out, that's someone else's job.
But you can get a nice tractor, you can do it for your snowboard and with a tobacco on it, you're good, dig away. That's a good justification, a little PTO on it, because it's gonna cost you that much just to have someone come in.
Not bad, with my life though, I will literally dig out my septic tank by accident and not, not have glue.
Do you have access to clean out there, second, line one to ten?
Uh, yeah, so it's pretty easy to take that off, use a little router to go through it, clean it up. Oh, yeah, no, I forgot, I mean, access is there.
Yeah, so I'm sure I tear up the pipe. You were eliminated for a while there.
Yeah.
You dropped your penny too.
That was one thing, yeah, because actually there's only a good color over it, you know, because that was when I was at, um, we had a couple of two years. So from the point of like, I knew exactly where it was, I'd dig it out, I knew how to pop it open, like the whole thing, um, you know, because I had to. Vehicle there, like there's an electrician, it stopped working and my wife was the one who says, she smells something, that's what it was, when I brought the guy out, he opened it up, I mean, it was high, and I was like, how much more, like four thousand, I was like, why, like, how much, you know, like, how much use are you getting out of it? It's like, I don't know, well, forty-four hours. I was like, oh, seriously. And it was, it was like, one little, I don't know, I don't know what it was, but there was some electrical thing that had just busted, you know, I think the part, it cost you five bucks to fix.
And it broke.
Yeah, so what's crazy is that some prior owner had put an alarm, I never heard of this, like septic alarms.
Yeah, I have an alarm, I have a dousing tank.
Okay.
And has a pump in there and yet if it, uh, if it fails, it goes to a certain level, when my alarm was on, the pump's not working, which happened to me.
So here at the, the pump, like, obviously, this stuff's working, the alarm failed, it was like double A. We couldn't figure out why it failed, but it's a waste. All right. Right, well, the floor in the room says seven fifteen, so that's what we're gonna go with. Uh, so all right, with that, I will, um, call the hearing for sixty-four Pine Point Road. Entertain a motion to waive the notice.
I am going to waive the notice for sixty-four Pine Point Road, second.
The motion with a second, uh, discussion, there are none, all in favor? All right, and the notice, the reading and notice is waived. Um, so, uh, in just a moment, we will call upon the applicant, uh, to provide our, just a brief presentation of, um, what is contained in the application. Um, during the course of, um, of the hearing, uh, members are encouraged to ask questions and make comments. Um, uh, and obviously, we do that for the applicant to provide any information that possibly can in response to his questions. Um, please note that, uh, notwithstanding what may be said by any particular member during the time in which the hearing is open, that is not, um, uh, necessarily the decision of the board, uh, the decision of the board is only, um, once the hearing is closed, we can take, uh, no longer take information, um, and ultimately a vote is taken. Um, um, after, um, that, uh, back and forth, uh, between the members, um, and the applicant, I'll open the floor up to members of the public, both in person and if anyone is online, including any of the butters. Um, as a reminder to any member of the public who wishes to make a comment or ask a question, please state the name and your address before you do so. Um, and, um, please direct any questions or comments actually to the board. As a, um, note to the applicant, uh, you are not required to respond to a question or a comment, uh, from a member of the public. Uh, you can simply decline to say anything at all. That being said, I will, uh, note that on occasion, members will then sort of adopt the question or comment that has been raised by a member of the public and then ask you directly. Um, so, but it's ultimately, uh, it's your decision to what you want to do. Um, once we have taken all the information, uh, that, um, um, uh, that we have requested, um, uh, we'll consider a vote to close the hearing, at which point, um, no further information can be taken and we'll discuss the matter and issue a decision, uh, whether that be tonight or, you know, for six, two, three. So with that, I will, the applicant, the floor.
All right, well, welcome, um, to the, you know, planning board, this is the first time I've had an opportunity to address a planning board like this, so, um.
Zoning board.
Zoning board.
Yeah, we don't play, yeah, we don't play.
They just don't.
Yeah, right.
This is Kevin Starnes and I'm Amy Starnes, so.
That's it.
So, uh, we move to still, it'll be a year and about five days. And, uh, we found, uh, we've been looking for a property on water and we were looking at two different towns because we wanted to keep our friends. And so we found a property and we saw the potential in this property, uh, it was nineteen fifty's house, nineteen fifty-four was built. And we saw the opportunity to modernize it, make it a little bit more useful for the things that we want to do. Uh, our children have told us that we have to die in this house. We want to find a way to do that and do that comfortably and also update a lot of the things that are in the house that seemingly are nineteen fifty-four as they were built. Um, so as we go through a good piece of the information here, obviously, you've seen a lot of it. Um, the ceilings are seven feet tall, we want to try to raise the ceiling so that I can, you know, do yoga and I can raise my hands.
I'm four eleven, so it doesn't bother me as much, but if I'm gonna be in this house till I die, then I'd really like to have it be a little bit dramatic.
And you have that short Christmas tree.
Yeah, exactly, we actually had to get a new Christmas tree because it's in a little bit from our old house to this one.
So, uh, we have, uh, we have two daughters, one, uh, just graduated college and has decided to come home and stay with us. Um, one just started college, so we want to make sure that we have a place for them to come, uh, and stay with us as well. So the, the renovation for us is to do a couple of things on the second floor. We want to increase the size of the bedroom that's up there, um, keep the office the same size, but we want to add a bathroom. So there's comfortable living for, you know, when our, our kids are home. The second, the, the street level floor, um, raise that ceiling. We want to expand, take the dining room that's there now, that's about eleven by thirteen and just expand it into the kitchen. So it's one room and we have space to be able to, to work and have fun and entertain. And then we also want to, uh, just enjoy the space and if we do need to, we can't get a refrigerator into the house right now. I don't know how they got that one. So, um, I think that the front entry right now is literally, um, like, like thirty-six inches to the stairs and then there's like thirty-inch opening ways. So we're just trying to open up the space a little bit from that perspective. In order to raise the first floor up to eight feet, um, a new set of stairs have to be put in, which means that they have to be brought forward a little bit. So from that perspective, the footprint of the house stays mostly the same with the exception of bringing the entry out about five feet. And with that, it actually only, the variance is only three point four three feet in terms of the variance, because there's already a corner of the house that's a little bit up. Um, so from that perspective, um, the outside of the house, we're gonna replace the wood, which is starting to deteriorate already with PVC vinyl siding and trim fascia board. And then the actual wood siding that's there now, we're gonna replace with a certainty, um, cedar impression siding. So it will pretty much last forever, well, pretty forever.
Forever.
Yeah, so for our, um, and yeah, we love the community, we love, I mean, we love the, the neighbors. It's been a great move for us and we're excited to hopefully earn the approval. Again, I don't know exactly, uh, how these things work, but we're excited to answer any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Questions, comments, thoughts from members of the board?
Just to be clear, the height of roof isn't changing?
No, the height of the roof is, is going up.
Okay, and to, to what, what's the height?
I, I, uh, I don't know, uh, I don't have, I mean, I don't know if the plans actually show the total elevation, but it's.
Looking right in the middle of five.
Yeah, it's, um, it's gonna be, if, if I, it's gonna be an additional foot on the first floor, an additional foot on the second floor, and then, uh, there's gonna be space in the attic for the air handler. So, um, it's gonna be an additional seven feet higher than it is today.
Yeah, so there is a maximum height that's a lot of.
Yeah, I, okay, what is the?
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet.
What's that?
It's a cape.
If it's a cape, I doubt that it would be, they have many.
There's a drawing of all the businesses there and it's only about.
Twenty-four was the number I had in my head, but I didn't want to say it without.
Yeah, you, you're less than thirty-five feet.
And we're maintaining the cape, it is a cape now, it's a dormer, so yes, it's going up, but we're maintaining that, that cape frontage, so we want to maintain that throughout the house.
I just had a question on the application, I don't know if this was an error or not, it says existing setback twenty-four forty-five, proposed setback, setback twenty-one oh-two. That's actually a smaller setback.
Um, I'm, maybe I've, I misunderstood the, the setback, so it's, did I do that the wrong way? No?
They're bringing the house closer to the street.
I see, but the setback itself is gonna be smaller?
Just coming in at a setback, yeah, there is.
So if, if the, if it's thirty feet total, right now, we're at twenty-four feet, so we're over the setback.
Oh, I see.
And then we're asking for the three point four three.
For just that front doorway here.
So, so the amount of addition is like, is three, maybe four, three, correct, okay.
The addition, well, I mean, the addition is of, it's five feet and then there's a little, um, alcove for, or covering portion.
Yeah.
Well, because part of that addition is already within the setback that exists, that, like, the only additional setback closer to the street is, is the three point four.
It's to your foundation.
There, it says, it's to your foundation, you may have overhang.
Yeah.
On your little roof, that's one of the differences.
Oh, well then, I mean, then technically, the foundation piece is probably within the existing setback, that's the twenty-four point four five.
So does that need to be changed, change the application or is that?
No, no, it was just my clarification.
For me, that's the only thing that we're here to consider, I don't care how high the thing is, it doesn't go thirty-five feet, but making a eleven foot ceiling in the first floor, fine, we don't have any say in that. Dormers, we don't have any say in that, you're not really increasing anything, except for a little bit in the front maybe.
Yeah, so that's the only thing we're really voting on.
Yeah.
And.
So you actually didn't have, it's twenty-four point two feet for the highest range mark.
Well, you can read that, I can't. I was looking at the numbers, but I didn't look over there, I didn't do this.
I think that's what you said, right? Yeah.
Well, Michael, Michael found it first, so.
I do have one question, do, does the Board of Health get involved in anything with this? Because you're doing a major renovation, your subject system may be fine, but do they have to pass on it that it's okay? I don't know.
If we were adding additional, well, we cannot add an additional setting.
I know that.
Um, so that, to my knowledge, is the only thing they would need to, and I, and I did speak to the representative, I think Jim is his name.
Okay.
Um, and he said, yeah, you can add as many bathrooms as you want, it's just permitted vendors, so then we're not adding any bathrooms, I got two, so, yeah.
So this really isn't out of jurisdiction, this is really just a general question, can they, to raise the walls?
Yes.
They're gonna just put new studs all the way up, make them taller, or is that how they're gonna do that?
Um, sorta, so they're gonna take the whole second floor roofline, they're gonna, they're gonna build a knee wall up about ten inches.
Okay.
And then around the new footprint and then build the studs and make it weather tight and then come in and then take down the ceiling and raise it.
Okay, good, that's a nice technique, is it a storage structure?
It's not, no. We were kind of hoping that it was because we see like the Twilight Club and all, and like, is that it?
We have like a little pillar on the side of our front lawn, but it's not our house, that is pointing to.
Um, I'll take a moment and just ask, as there's nobody else in the room, if there's anybody online, members of the public or any of the butters, um, please virtually raise your hand and Michael.
Uh, the raised hand feature is at the bottom of the Zoom screen, it should either be like a little hand icon or a button that says reactions. Okay. Okay, I just clicked ask on mute, so if you can click the unmute button.
Yes, sir, can you state your name, address?
Uh, Robert Gardner, sixty-two Pine Point Road.
And what is your question or comment?
No, I, I would only say that, uh, we completely support the plan, Kevin, Kevin came next door to us and showed us the plans and very cooperative, so we have no complaints at all, I just responded to the questions to whether we're on the line.
Excellent.
Just to be clear, I did not offer him any burden for this. I mean, it's not a very good move.
Rod, you gotta hold out for more next time. Thank you very much. Anybody else on the line? Uh, there's no one else, oh, there you go, okay. Um, any other questions or comments from members of the board? Great, thank you, I'm upset, uh, anything else, we've been talking?
I don't think so.
Okay, um, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to closing, right, sixty-four Pine Point, second.
All right, your motion with a second, any discussion? There are none, all in favor of closing the hearing?
All right.
All right, motion passes, all right, so at this point, the hearing is now closed, you know, I want to take, um, information, uh, from the applicant or from members of the public. Um, I believe Michael has a draft decision, um, that will be handed out. Uh, while he's doing that, if anyone has any thoughts or comments, they would love to, like, raise or discuss, um, feel free. Otherwise, this seems to be a pretty straightforward, we won't do it in this manner. All right, well, if you have thoughts or comments, uh, please feel free to offer them, otherwise, I would encourage folks to take a look at the draft decision and if you have any, um, concerns or edits to raise them, um, calling out those numbers as it's a pretty short decision.
So with regard to the light itself, is there any additional paving or consideration for any of that, or is this just building that we were talking about?
Technically, we can ask questions, I don't, because the hearing is closed.
Oh, you're right, sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I didn't ask that question.
Remember, I indicated on the plan, so. All says it on, pave Pine Point Road.
All right, any edits, questions, comments about the decision or anything else related to the applicant? And move we approve the decision as presented? Okay. For your end.
Well, for permeant decision, we're just some quick edits.
Yeah.
So I would say we should take Lenny off since Maria was voting on both. And then I left a blank and I'll just change it to, to say that it was the structural additions, um, that was presented on the plans. That's what you're voting to permit, so those are the things, and then if you vote yet to, that, okay.
Yeah, so, all right, if there is nothing, I will entertain the first motion.
Move we approve the, that's for sixty-four Pine Point Road as amended.
No.
Are we gonna do the editing first this time? Are we gonna grant the permit first?
We have to grant it first, then we get the decision.
Okay.
Whichever way you want to do it.
Yeah, that's the way you do it.
Yeah, okay.
That's the way we do it.
I hope that we grant the, uh, special measure for sixty-four Pine Point Road.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, all right.
Now I, move we approve, uh, the, uh, decision for sixty-four Pine Point Road as amended.
Second, your motion with a second, any discussion or further edits? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
All right, and with that, we have a decision. You're all set, you'll be hearing from Michael, there's an appeal period of twenty-one days, um, and then at that point, it should be all set.
Okay.
Okay, I should start, Mike, well, we have the hearing, conservation department, and then after that, we start the permitting process, but we should probably make it twenty-one days to start.
Yes, so this is kind of the time you can start getting things organized, um, and then you can start applying for building permits. And then once, twenty-one appeal period, and you have to report it and then you can get your building permit. So you're perfectly registered, so I'll send a follow-up email tomorrow. So I'll send a follow up email tomorrow and it'll give you all the details.
I appreciate you putting so much, so thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. It was nice to meet you.
All right, thank you so much.
You're gonna move into your neighbor's house, everything that.
All right, the next item we have is the continued hearing for twenty October Lane. Thank you. Um, there's been a request to withdraw the petition uh, without prejudice, um, as they have, um, moved the, uh, the proposed shed eliminated all the setbacks as a result of errant, non needed. Um, so, um, I'll open the floor to see if anyone has any comments, discussion?
My only comment is that we should accept their request, but I think we should document the fact that, uh, the rear yard has been defined.
The blue line, red line?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we know where they relocated to? Is it, you know, where the same old area was?
Um, I'm not sure. I didn't see the plan.
Okay. Just curious.
They have a building permit now.
Oh, okay.
One thing, uh, but I think that's probably it's probably was in.
It is in.
I think it's all in minutes already, just that vote was taken. Uh, so.
If you think that's adequate, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it would be in the file, so if someone grabs the file, it's related to the hearing, it would be in there.
Okay.
Um, so, all right, anything else? No, all right, um. You're on this.
I am on this.
You are, okay. Um, all right, uh, all in favor, well, I guess I'll take a motion.
I move to accept the withdrawal of the application for variance for twenty October. I'll stick on that.
Your motion, your second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
I guess I'm.
Yes, one copy for us.
Did you sign that? I didn't sign anything. Speaking of which, is that decision, is there a copy here that I can sign now or that we just require me to?
Um, I can make the edits now.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I I don't, you don't force it. I can get back in line.
Okay. Um, the only other item we had on the agenda was, uh, our ongoing, uh, review and discussion of section three dot two dot two dot five zoning by law involving panels. Um, I believe as part of the, um, the, uh, materials. It was in the supplemental materials, uh, we'd asked for a list of the panels that Michael had, and Michael distributed those, um. It's like there are, uh, nine.
One.
Uh, two commercial nature, seven of personal nature. Um, so I'm guessing that, um, the three at the bottom are additions the other night, right?
It's just a lower population.
Yes, so if there are four dogs, the state does not need to come in to inspect the panel. There are five or more dogs and the state needs to do an annual review of inspection.
For the commercial.
Twenty seven of those by people of ten years ago.
So do we, how do we classify personal versus commercial? I assume like that determination, do you know?
I'm assuming it's because it's who owns the dogs.
I don't know.
Because like, if you notice, like the, uh, like the, whenever they have, like, if you look at, I'm guessing, sorry, I'm being surmising, but, um, if you look at like the number of dogs, number of the owner's dogs, and then like the ma, you know, like the numbers tend to all be the same. There's, there is a, a difference on on eight twenty seven Hastings where there's a little bit of a blip there. Um, like there were six dogs there, but apparently the owner only owned five, which you compare that to like, you know, Hudson Road, they own two dogs, but thirty definitely there, you know, so I think that's the way you kind of distinguish it.
Well, maybe it changes.
Six, yeah.
But six is, six is interesting. It's backwards. They own fourteen dogs, but apparently only eight were there at the time, so. Um.
Wouldn't it have something to do with, you know, a kind of, um, business operation you're doing with the dogs?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they have a business license.
Yeah.
You know, um.
Or the commercials.
Correct.
Yeah.
Sure, there's a business license. Uh, yeah.
Anyway.
So.
Can I imagine thirty dogs or fifteen dogs?
Some of those are dog breeders.
Right.
So they may have just like two dogs at one point, but then they'll have puppies for two months and then a little bit down to two. So.
Yeah.
There's, it counts for reflection.
When it's worth, you're ready to, like, I could own six dogs, I just don't tell anybody, like, don't like, don't mind my profits. With some sort of rationale.
Yes, I mean, that's true. You have one dog, you don't, you're supposed to license that. But if you don't report in your cot, then there are fines. I believe if it's over four, there, it's a state level law.
Oh, right.
Or is it above the
The tax. Um, so, um, understanding our sort of limits in terms of, um, what we can, cannot do to affect our own bylaws, um. You got thoughts, things that they, you know, wanna seek clarification for, or if they think there's a need for the planning board to, you know, take some sort of action? There's a gap in the, in the bylaw that, you know, should be considered?
I'm a little unclear on the history, like, is there problems coming up with it that's prompting it or does come up often? Just curious for the.
I mean, I'll say the I don't know, in the, I mean, I guess it's actually funny because of the South Acton Road, I can be like, apparently I've been on this board for five years because I remember that one, um. Um.
We had a lot of concerns with that one.
That one was, that one was a big one, not a big one, but there was a lot of, um, of butter and neighbor, uh, sort of participation.
Increased.
Yeah.
And that one's commercial, right?
That one was commercial, that's right. Um, and I think we did, we did, we did revisit that, I think, a year later.
Yeah, we did.
Um, the only other instance was the, um.
She's a keeper, we're here.
That's right. They showed up, um, where was it, a year or two ago, but that was less about.
They were looking to expand.
Yeah, that was less about kennel operation and more about the fact that there was a property for sale. I think it was the, um, uh, the greenhouse.
Yeah, no, it was two blocks down.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a house in between and they wanted to transport the dogs from one.
Yeah, they were trying to, yeah, they wanted to sort of informally sort of gauge like what issues they'd have to think about, or could they sort of combine the operations and we provided some, what I would say, informal, nonspecific guidance, um, then they never came back. Um, because I think there was, they were, they were just, they were gonna have some problems, unfortunately. Um, but that had nothing to do with fact they were a kennel. That was just properties that, you know, yeah.
Well, one of the problems was the, the land they wanted to potentially take over was partially commercial.
That's right. I'd forgotten.
And so, so that's the question I have is, is what was the planning board's rationale for the zoning law to just be residential?
Yeah.
You know, why, what is the, you know.
Yeah, you think it's a commercial, should be like by default, you know, should be an issue there.
It's been around for a long.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Um, but otherwise, I don't think we've had people coming forth to complain or issue objections or concerns or anything like that, so.
So in some way, that's running almost like the farm type thing, because farm ends up almost like a commercial, if you're running as a farm and then, but you're in a residential area. Is it like that?
Oh, oh, you mean like if you own two goats or a man for the farm or whatever?
No, you're not necessarily. I think it's supposed, like, there's, you know, stable licenses.
Right.
There's a, a different level, but you're not in a commercial.
Agriculture farm, you have to be five acres, otherwise the zoning bylaw and apply applies. And one of the problems that came up was it has to be, the bylaw says veterinary hospitals and kennels provided that no such building, buildings are located within a hundred feet of a property line. That's a problem. Not the, the good problem or bad problem, I don't know what, but the one on South Acton Road, we spent a lot of time with them, there are a lot of concerns. The, the, the property they owned, besides a normal rectangular shape, had a large run in the back. It covered many, many houses, many, many lots.
Because it cut across the backyards of three or four houses.
Yeah. And the fact that they had so many dogs and dogs barking, the at least one of the families was concerned about the dogs barking. The other one had a dog that barked anyway, so.
Barking more than the dogs that they had.
And, you know, they said, well, we have collars on them, so they, we train them and encourage them not to bark, so that, uh, if they start barking, they're reminded instantly that they got a problem.
Okay.
And, you know, it's worked. I don't know if we can authorize to insist on that for like a new zoning bylaw, or we have a, a case comes before us, uh, how do we handle it?
Conditioning?
Yeah. What, what conditions can we place on it? Because a self, I'd like to put a condition on barking for almost any dog in town. Because some, we had a dog next to us, and he was outside all day, bark, 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 bark. He was lonely.
Yeah.
And, uh, no neighbor should have to put up with that or even raise the issue. And, and I don't know, some of these here with fifteen dogs, uh.
Does that fall under like a typical like noise?
The noise, or it just doesn't mean that thing. Uh, it's a useless.
No, it's, it's, it's a nuisance like anything else, whether it's, you could say it's a dog, you could say it's a rooster, you could say it's a leek dog. I mean, I don't need to put it that way, but it's like.
Or it could be like a loud radio or that's why I was.
Oh, yeah, it's the like, the guy operates, you know, it's like the people who do like mechanic work in their yard, you know, all day, or they're operating like ad hoc snowplow, you know.
A landscaping mower is.
Whatever, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it would all fall under sort of a general sort of nuisance.
Yeah.
My wife's agree.
My wife's niece lives in North Carolina and the town has a bylaw or law that can't have roosters. Because they make a lot of racket.
Where do you get your chickens?
But I mean, you know, the people, we have laws up here also about chickens because they're worrying about the droppings and everything, but, uh, you know, if someone had a, a rooster next door.
For my wife having roosters, that we protect the roosters.
We do have a rooster next door as well.
Yeah, they are.
All day long.
Yeah.
When I lived in J P, we had, there was a rooster in the neighborhood. Nobody complained because I guess they thought it was nice to have a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, our next door neighbor had the rooster and we always liked it. I could go wear it far, so.
Yeah.
He keeps all his chicken, hens in line, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, in some ways, it's like the way I see this is that like you can either look at it saying like, are we trying, that's silly, I hate to use that term, but I'll use it anyway, are we trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist? Because it's not like we've got like people coming before us every single week.
Yeah, that's not they don't come.
You know, right, but it's not like we're, you know.
Very good guess the question Maria's asking about how many complaints have.
Right, you know, the flip side, of course, is that, you know, and part of the review of this and some of the other reviews we've done is like, well, you know, it's really that we've gone through a stretch of what I would call slow meetings, you know, like it's a good opportunity to actually take a look and see like, well, are there any things that we can do preemptively saying, oh, you know what? You know, we'd like to get some clarification on this, or, you know, could the planning board consider this or whatever it might be, you know? And the answer is no, we're fine, so be it.
I mean, if somebody came before us again, similar to South Acton, I think we already have, you know, a precedent in how we deal with it, you know, we'd make a site visit. Um, we'd set conditions, we'd have a review after, you know, within a year or less. So I think we already have a, you know, a precedent plan in what happened at South Acton. But the one on South Acton Road, we don't know, we had no control. There already existed a tree, uh, their grandfather.
Right.
And so there's, there's a dog barking problem and we can't address it with them anymore because their grandfather didn't keep doing what they've been doing.
And I, I think I remember that they personally had a number of dogs, more than shows up here when they started the business.
And then, so this is a residential area versus a commercial area?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the odd nature of the fact that, you know.
It's a commercial, it's the, it's number four.
Yeah, right, no, but it's not, it's not a commercial zone.
No, correct.
Right.
Right, it's in the residential area.
Yeah, it makes a trick.
So anyway, just bringing up issues that, you know, we've we have to address if a new kennel comes into us, if they decide to come into us or just decide to make it a commercial kennel and not tell anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, the ladies for the kennel on South Acton Road, they did a, you know, they've done a very good job. I don't know if there's been any complaints, no animals gotten away since they set it up.
Yeah.
Plus before that, an animal got away. I, I think they run a really good business, like, for example, when I, you know, when I was going away, I, you know, want to find a place to board my dog. So I immediately thought of them and they told me, they said, well, before we could board your dog, we'd have to have your dog here for training so that we know, you know, what your dog is like, so, you know, I think they do, do deal with, do deal with this. Can't say that everybody does, so. Anyway, is there something we need to change or not? Okay, a hundred foot is always a problem too, though.
It's on sound travels. I mean, a hundred feet is nothing if you're gonna worry about sound.
Um, there was another on Great Road that applied for to be a, I don't know, a kennel or something. And it was turned down because it couldn't be done correctly. That was long. Yeah. So, so anyway. Maybe there's nothing we do, just keep going on what we're doing and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, like I said, if, you know, I'm happy to add it to the agenda for the next meeting, just, you know, just to sort of, you know, give people clots to see if there's something based on the bylaw and based on the C N O's, the sort of the, uh, kennel census, and so, you know, if there are items that we want the planning board to consider, you know, which, you know, you know, in, in that way, but, I mean, ultimately, you know, we've only had, you know, the last ten years, we've had two.
Yeah.
You know.
It may be appropriate for the district, so. Like commercial.
Yeah, I've never quite understood, like.
I was just about to ask, just out of curiosity, when you say, what are some of the solutions that were, we're thinking, like switching to.
Have a dog store and still, uh, and so shopping center.
They did, there was one, it's fine now, it's not a business.
Oh, it was, they ended up dogs.
There was a, oh, I, I don't know if they sold.
Oh, no, that was, that was just a supply. That was a supply, yeah, 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 yeah.
As a matter of fact, the woman that owned the pet supply house, she's on here for, uh, personal dog sets, um, I don't know. Anyway. Maybe it's dead. No, I mean.
But is that one of the things, like, for instance, possibly switching zoning from residential into commer, into commercial or what? What were some of the kind of?
No one wants, I'd take it out of residential is one thing. They don't, they wanted a residential.
Yeah.
Especially the owners that have them.
Well, of course, yeah, people go along with it.
Yeah, although it may make sense to allow, for example.
Other areas.
Other areas, you know, because if, if they're doing, you know, in dog sitting or, or, or whatever you wanna call it, daycare type stuff, um, it may be more appropriate in a commercial setting where you have larger nu- numbers of dogs and not necessarily still five, but, you know.
No, but I mean, you know, um.
Yeah.
You know, but I've, I've driven through other towns and like, if you'll be in a shopping area and there's a, like a doggy daycare, you know, that's there, I think Leinster's got one. Like, I swear I've driven by one where it's like, it's like, it's like in the median.
Yeah.
Odd spot for it, but like, it's a doggy daycare. Like, they have their setup there.
Yeah.
Um, and so, I maybe think about it, if it's just during working hours, it's kind of ideal, it's probably what people's commute for the highway. Um.
And it takes it out the residential
Yeah.
issue.
Yeah, 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 so, um, all right.
What's in it, that, what are they commercial, where they're doing build outs at the beginning, where they're thinking about sound and all?
That's, that's exactly right, you know, lay down some asterisk, you know, um, so, okay, all right, why don't we just keep it on the agenda for the next meeting, just as sort of a wrap up, see if there's anything that, you know, people wanna flag to the planning board, um, and if not, then we can sort of just kind of close the chapter on this, and find some other issue they wanna take a look at. All right, I think that's it for the agenda, unless you have anything else. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at nineteen fifty seven, eight.
Is that Genozi?
No, it's all exact.
We have a motion, uh, for a second, uh, any discussion, there are none, all in favor, uh, me adjourned.